I'll call the special city commission meeting to February 29th, 2018. What do you, what do you think?
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, we are a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just for everyone's information, this is special because, as you know, the commission session was canceled last Tuesday because of weather. Nice cold on that run. And so we're having, we had a work session earlier, began at 5:30, and now we're convening the 7:30, which would normally be the legislative session and is now the special meeting. So the first order of business, if we can, let's ask for commissioner comments.
I just want to be sure that we note that today is Kansas Day, January 29th. That is the official birthday anniversary of statehood. And I think it's important that we pay attention. The country's kind of confused, sometimes our state is confused, but in general, we need to get along the best we can and make good decisions, so, by talking about things.
I just want to say, it's going to be terribly cold again today, this evening and most of tomorrow, and I think USD 475, I believe, is closed tomorrow, and I think USD 383 still has school. But once again, if you have children, very young, make sure they are really bundled up. Any kind of exposure gives frostbite, and it does not make for good conditions, or drop them off at school, or keep them at home. You still have the privilege of making all of those decisions and choices on behalf of your children, but safe, take precautions. If you, if there are people out there who may not have heating, or may have some type of home care issues, make sure you have your emergency numbers next to you, or go to the Manhattan Emergency Shelter, or have a Via Cristi number, or 911, or something close to you, and just in, just in case, you just never know. Just be careful the next couple of days. Thank you.
Yeah, that's a great message. Only thing I might add to that is if you see someone who obviously is outside where they shouldn't be, you can always contact the RCPD, and they've got some ways to take care of people. As for the public's forbearance, we've got a lot of potholes that have occurred just in the last, probably the last week or so. We are unfortunately in a zone with a lot of thawing and freezing, and having that rain just before a hard freeze was devastating to our roads. Everybody probably noticed that particularly the sections between concrete panels, a lot of those popped out, big sections, and the city is doing the best they can to temporarily patch those until we can get around to them on our normal maintenance period, so everybody's aware of that. I'd like to congratulate both Linda Morris and Bob Ward. They were sworn in as new members of the law board. Appreciate their service, and appreciate Usha's service for the past few years, and she's got other things of interest to do now, so. We also congratulate Jason Smith, who's now on, going to follow behind Lyle. We appreciate him coming on. Any other?
I'll introduce Dennis Marstall. Dennis is our new assistant city manager. Started last Friday. He comes to us from Charlotte, but a Manhattan native, Manhattan High School, as well as K-State and Louisville, and so we appreciate having him onboard, and I know he's looking forward to working with you.
Yeah, welcome. Glad to have you here. Terrific. And as you may know, we did some goal setting last Friday. I think we spent from 11 o'clock to just about a quarter to 5:00 redoing the goals that we'd set last year, which are essentially designed to carry us for two years, but we had some modifications to those. Finished some that we had written down, and we also added a few, and so we'll have those out probably in another week or so, depending on how busy Gary is. All right. Let's move to item number three, which is consent agenda. And as all of you know, these are items that are routine or housekeeping nature, and which previously been looked at by the commission. And a commissioner may request that any one of these items be further discussed, or moved to the end of the consent agenda. So does the commission have any questions or comment on any of the agenda items?
I would just like to say that I'm, I think it's important to call attention that, to the fact that the Wildcat Creek watershed committee, or advisory team, is being appointed by both the city and the county, because we feel a sense of urgency to get moving. So Wynne Butler and I will be serving on, as the commission representatives to that committee team.
Thank you. So are there any public comments on any of the consent agenda items? Seeing none, we'll close public comment and ask for a motion.
I move we approve the consent agenda. Second.
Gary, you call the rule.
Mayor Dodson.
Yes.
Commissioner Ready.
Yes.
Commissioner Butler.
Yes.
Commissioner McKee.
Yes.
And Commissioner Morse.
Yes.
Motion carries five, zero.
And now we'll move to item four, which is the general agenda, and the first item is A, Lee Mill Village lots 34 to 52, and the presenter will be Jason Hildre, deputy city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, this evening, we're going to walk through a couple of different items before you, first of all, we want to highlight the Manhattan Area Housing Partnership's proposal. We have a total of 35 lots in Lee Mill Village, and they have requested the purchase of 19 of those. They would like to do a senior tax credit project, primarily of duplexes. So lots 32 through 52, be 18 duplex lots, and then one for a clubhouse. Target population for these, 55 plus, and that median income between 40% and 60% would be eligible to live at these units. They've essentially offered $20,000 a lot, for a total of $380,000. The current balance of the specials is roughly about 30 grand per lot, so that's $570,000 for the total 19 lots. The city would transfer the property, and that's contingent on all those specials being paid off, and it would require us essentially to come up with $10,000 per lot, or 190 grand. We've developed a real estate option for you to consider this evening on those 19 lots. That agreement has the following contingencies, obviously, that they would receive tax credits from the state of Kansas. We have a PUD amendment, and as the owner of this property, we would like to request permission this evening for city manager to sign that zoning amendment. That will allow us to address a number of issues that are currently in the PUD, that past and current developers have had questions about, and request even from the HOA to address. We need to go through a process to notify the neighborhood, engage with the homeowners' association, and work through some of those items. One of the main ones that the homeowners' association is concerned about, there are private streets out there, and they have the obligation of maintaining those. They would really like to see the city take those streets, make them public. As the owner today, they essentially are, because we own all the common ground, and the lots that are obviously, we're trying to sell. Eventually, the city hopes to get out from underneath all of this, and the common ground included, but the PUD and the platting process would allow us an opportunity to clean up some things that the HOA and, like I mentioned, past and future developers may have an issue with. Some of those include landscaping, signage, the number of parking stalls. We can do a little bit better job, we believe, in analyzing, especially if duplexes become the primary use away from the townhome concept that was originally approved. And then addressing the covenants and the conditions of those common areas at which we are the owner of today. I mentioned the PUD amendment. That neighborhood meeting, we believe, obviously will handle quite a bit of conversation. We know the HOA is interested in some of those provisions, but we need to notify a broader area than just those 10 townhome complexes. Just a reminder, Lee Mill Village comprised of 52 lots. They're suggesting we start with 32, lot 32, and purchase the stretch of property along South Reef, and then turning the corner, they're also interested in the lots from 49 to 52. 31 and 32, so you can see there's a split, based on their request. 31 and 30, obviously not part of it. 13, 12, and 11 are very difficult lots to develop. But I point that out just because through our discussions with a lot of developers, these three are going to be problematic. Not tomorrow, but sometime, you ought to go out there and walk around, and the relief and the slope down to the ravine back here is significant. It would require a lot of fill to make that work. Not saying it couldn't. Obviously, it was platted that way, but I think we're going to have some challenges ahead of us trying to move those lots. As a reminder, you know, we went to a 2017 tax sale. We had been paying the specials on this for a five or six-year period. It got to a point where the county finally took it to a sale. The city was able to purchase all the property involved with Lee Mill Village, with the exception of lots 1 through 10, basically for what was owed in property taxes and our outstanding mowing bills. So we purchased it, obviously, with a, an intent to go back out and try to market the property in a way that we felt like was most beneficial and could have success within the community, rather than some folks getting tied up in the PUD or in the HOA covenants and conditions that would have restricted them. So the request involves a $7 million development. 36 units and 18 buildings. Each building approximately could be appraised around $400,000. Now, we're seeing a higher value than that, but I wanted to be conservative with my numbers. So it'd be 200,000 per side on a duplex. That would generate around $6,670 in annual property taxes per building, so per lot. 120 in annual property taxes for all 18, once they're constructed and part of the valuation process. Our annual exposure to the city for these 19 lots is just under $3,200 a lot. So on a yearly basis, for these designated lots that we've talked about, the city is expected to cover another $60,591 in specials. I just want to make sure we're aware of that as we get into this next slide. I tried to break down a cost-benefit perspective that looks at a given year, and then for the 10 years remaining.
Jason, real quick, before you go, just to make sure I understand, if you go back, is, what are, what is the amount that we're paying? I assume we're paying the specials on those lots today, right?
All 35 of them.
And what is that annual?
$111,000.
So where does that $60,000 in exposure come from?
That's the 19 that they're talking about purchasing at the annual rate of $3,189.
Got it, okay.
Yep. So that 6591 is just a portion of the 111 we pay for all 35. So at $20,000 a lot, that request essentially nets us out $10,000 that they expect the city to come up with to wipe those specials clean, and basically pay them off. At $30,000 per lot, it's a $190,000 investment from the city. We'll obviously receive what they suggested paying, the $20,000 per lot, or $380,000 from the applicant, but that exposure to the city would require that $570,000 payoff, $190,000. We believe we could go into the utility funds, which is where a lot of those specials are originating from, and stormwater, water, sewer, all part of that annual special assessment. They have requested $93,000 worth of fees and building permits. If you add the 190 that we would put in to wipe, to pay off the specials, and the $93,000 in waivers, that total cost to the city is about 283 grand. Add $120,000 in annual property taxes, which is the potential of their development, I just looked at the 10% that comes to the city. You could easily take that times 10 and have 1.2 million in property taxes, but the reality is, the city only receives 10%, so of that, for the next 10 years, we would net 120 grand. That 60,591, we would obviously not have that exposure any longer if we paid them off, and if we hold that exposure for the next 10 years, and no one buys these lots, we're exposing ourselves to $600,591. We realize a benefit annually of about $180,000 between the 120 and the 60, 591. So after two years, you could say we're in a positive situation from a cost-benefit analysis, based on what they've requested we put in, and what the community will gain by way of deferred payment on the specials and a realization of the property taxes. But if you look at that over the 10-year period, there's actually a positive gain back to the city of $437,000. And that's assuming both scenarios. They buy it, and they pay all their taxes, and the scenario where nobody buys it for 10 years. Now, there could be a number in between there. We could have another developer show up in a year, two years, five years, but obviously cut into, you know, some value in the middle there. But the point being, if we sit on this for another 10, our exposure's out here. If we sell now, our gain is here, and somewhere in between that is going to be reality. And I wanted to highlight both ends of the spectrum, so we could think about this, not only as a tax credit project, which we've partnered with the Chodo and many other tax credit developers in the past, but as an opportunity to sell a significant number of lots in Lee Mill Village that would reduce our exposure over the next 10 years. So tonight, there's a tax credit resolution. That's a similar resolution that the governing body has passed and supported in the past on many tax credit applications. It goes to the state. They should hear back this summer on that application. There's a land option in your packet for the 19 lots in Lee Mill Village, and then there's also part of the motion to authorize the city manager to sign the PUD amendment. Be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time. If we do move forward tonight, and they are authorized in the summer, we'll be back in front of you with a development agreement. But the option for the land will obviously then start going through the contingencies before we actually transfer that property.
Why do the specials have to be paid off immediately?
It's, it's part of their proposal, and it relieves them of that future burden on those properties.
But if they, if they paid off their portion, I guess I'm more concerned about our portion, that $190,000, it seems like, at least from what I'm taking away, is that we just pay that immediately off upfront. Why do we have to do that? Couldn't we just keep making the annual payments on the bonds?
Specials go with the property owner. So as the property owner, they would receive that bill. Even though we're covering it today, as soon as that land transfers, the property taxes and the specials stay with the property. So they would get that bill. If, if, what you're, where you're headed, they would actually bring the bill into the city, and we would pay it, versus us just getting the specials off the books, and with their property tax bill, there are no specials.
Is there, are there any examples now, or in the past, where the city has done something like that?
No, no, I'm just kidding. I hope we never get there again, but it, we participate in specials, a city-at-large portion, quite frequently. So when we go out for projects, we oversize roads, we oversize infrastructure, we participate. The owners just get their portion in their tax bill. So exact same circumstances, I can't think any. I know Bill walked in. Can you think of a circumstance where we did that? And most often, I think, if we're in a real estate deal, if there's a way to get those specials taken care of, we've done a lot of deals out at the Business Park, where the city's been picking up specials for a long time, and as that land transfers, we build some of those payments into an economic development deal with a potential tenant to cover them, even though when the land transfers, that property tax statement will have those specials on it. Or they negotiate for us just to pay them off.
So if we've been paying for 10 years, like the land out at the Business Park, does, then the buyer only has to pay the remainder?
Correct.
Okay.
If we haven't taken care of them, yep.
The part about the city manager and the PUD amendment, is that for the entire PUD? It's not just for these lots, for this project?
A lot of, correct. We'll address, we'll open up the entire planned unit development, the entire zoning. The road that is in today, really between lot 10, lot 1, and the entry, you can drive on that today, and it'll take you to the end here, and then I think it connects you out to Reef, so that exists. This development will have to build a road through the middle to access these properties. They'll access from the rear, they won't access off Reef in their proposal, but Oakbrook Place, as I mentioned, is a private road, and we, during the PUD amendment, we can address that in the plat.
So the new road that's going to be built is not going to be on our nickel?
Won't be on our nickel, but it will be a public street. That's why the development agreement will come.
And what do you predict? So you've already predicted for the other remaining lots that haven't been, that, I mean, we won't see this again, because Ron's going to be approving the entire PUD as those lots sell?
He's just signing it so he can start the process, because we're the owner. It's going to the planning board. It's coming back to you all.
Okay, we'll see.
And for the most part, if we have comments about zoning changes, I prefer we wait until those hearings, but it's coming.
He's going to be able to kick it off and get it moving.
He'll, yeah, he'll get zoning staff and planning staff started, yes, but it'll come to the planning board and the commission.
So what happens if they don't get the tax credits in the summertime? Is the, is the proposal null and void, or?
Well, they, they may restructure and try again next year. There are projects in town that don't get funded, but they come back.
Was this done, was this proposal done through their board?
I believe so, and I think there are members of the Manhattan Area Housing Partnership Board here tonight.
All right. And if, since this is the first time we're doing something like this, by, from this evening, if we should move forward with it till we hear about tax credits? We've put out a request for proposals in the past, and I don't think we received any, right?
For developers, no, we haven't. And we have signs up at the property. We're out on Zillow, so there, that property's listed in a manner that reflects, basically $30,000 a lot is our asking price, so we can settle up on the specials.
If something should come up between now and summertime, would that go on as option B, and this is their, our first potential, since we're going to wait and see what happens with the tax credits?
If we enter into this land option, that will be given priority, and until those contingencies are met, though, we won't transfer that property. So if there is another offer for the property, you know, we're going to share the real estate deal, if it's executed tonight, with that proposer, and basically say, if they meet all the contingencies, we're locked in for lots 32 through 52. If it falls through, then they would be available. In talking with developers, the lots that are remaining may be the more attractive lots in the development. It's all in the eye of the beholder and the developer.
We want to do, because we want to get them all back on the tax rolls.
We do, and I think, from our perspective, I believe we're very fortunate to have the lots identified that they have for this project, and it visibly will give not only the existing tenants, but future developers the impression, if that many are coming online, something's happening, and finishing this out, making it a complete development, is on the horizon, and that may generate some momentum we need.
That's what I'm hoping for. I'm hoping if they see some kind of attraction to this area, it's not such a dead zone, and hopefully we can get it back on there. But we don't have to make a decision on specials or anything tonight, do we? We're just kind of agreeing to the proposal to move forward with it, but that's all still in discussion, I would think.
The agreement that's before you does address specials.
Okay, so we're agreeing to all of them?
Yeah, that property in that agreement would be transferred free of any encumbrances, which would identify the specials.
Somehow I thought that was coming a little bit later. I didn't realize we were going to make that decision. I think for the duplexes and the 4,000, 400,000, and the 200,000 apiece, it looks very doable, but I think one of the things we need to consider is the specials, but we also want to get that back into the community. So I have a little, a few concerns about the specials, but I think where we're at right now, I don't think is a, is a good spot to be.
And just, just as a reminder, because we're not in front of you talking with you about Lee Mill Village, you know, a lot, we've given you some updates, but we've clearly gone out locally and talked with a lot of developers. There's not a lot of subdivisions coming before you right now for any type of growth. I mean, there's a few here and there, but they're very isolated. We're seeing more growth and more opportunity in other parts of the region, not necessarily where our traditional neighborhoods have been over the last decade. So there's not a lot of momentum right now locally. The Lynx hit the market, and a lot of developers will tell us it's saturated, and it may saturate it for five, six years. And we're into year two or three now, and it could take a few more years before we see that type of demand again for lots, for building. We've had some regional and even Texas-based developers look at this, and... And they had some K-State ties. They wanted an investment back in Manhattan. They looked at it extremely hard. We even started negotiating a little bit. One of the developer team is out of Kansas City. They own a lot of property in Kansas City. They rent a lot of property in Kansas City. They too were interested and they were partnering together with a couple out of Texas. And eventually they just said, we can't make it, can't make the numbers work. So it's it's not as if they're lining up. And I just want to reiterate to you, there's not been a lot of interest in the property. We'll keep pushing it and advertising, but when Jill and Manhattan Area Housing Partnership showed up, it's an opportunity.
Right, I was I was a little concerned also because I think I saw Schultz's name on here when they did. Is it Briar? I don't remember what that area is.
Birchwood.
Yeah.
Birchwood.
And that was for affordable housing and rentals. So the $200,000 price tag seemed a little hefty for Jill Jacoby's organization. So for the seniors that they're thinking about moving in here, I thought that was a little bit high for that area.
And and they can expand on their their business model. They they clearly leverage credits, obviously as a capital infusion in their project. There's other resources that come into that. Their rents are set by the state and and they can capture so much from the rental market that they will put out there. We've seen, you know, $7 million isn't beyond the capacity of the Chodo. I think they've participated in other projects of of similar size and scope, but they can speak to that a little bit too.
Well, we'll wait till they get the tax credits and see what happens then. Thank you. I wanted to ask about the Homeowners Association.
Yeah.
Because if we're redoing the PUD, do we have the opportunity to make an adjustment? Or do we want the homeowners associa? Those are private streets. That's why we want the Homeowners Association, right?
So the Homeowners Association is really interested in the city taking over that private street.
I see.
They obviously have monthly dues. They're going to maintenance of the pool and maintenance of the the grounds and in the event they in the past would have had a repair to make in that street, it would have been on them. If we make it a public street subdivision, much like you see anywhere else, we'll be in there plowing and fixing potholes as the city. So I know they're interested in that. The covenants that govern the entire area are there. There are conditions within those that we may want to tweak. As the owner of the common ground and of the undeveloped areas, our percentage ownership is very high. And the way those covenants are written, as a governing body, we can start tweaking those if if we see fit. We clearly want their input. We clearly want their reactions to some of those changes. The pool is a is a cost for them. And at this point in time, there really hasn't been a lot of discussion with them beyond Oak Brook Place becoming a public street. But as the new development comes on, the Chodo may have requests for some of those conditions and and covenants to be adjusted.
So the street that's already there. Is it built to our standards?
Well, it's built to a standard that got through zoning and review by the engineering staff. I think if we were building it, it would probably be a little wider than it is. But we allowed it for that for that area.
But it's not substandard. It's just a little narrower.
It is narrow. There's really not a lot of room to park on the street. So there's little pockets, areas where people are parking, some of which are on undeveloped land, which won't be able to continue in the future. But with a duplex use versus the townhome, should be less vehicles.
You talk about the tax credit process and what they what their role and what the city's role in endorsing and kind of the impact of timing when you go back to talk to the homeowners and so on.
Yeah, and it, you know, from our perspective, traditionally, it's been supportive of that resolution moving forward. And then they go through their process with the state and they have representatives here that can speak to that commissioner that that could give us all some insight. Once they receive it, though, you know, it's a matter of with our agreement, working through those contingencies of which one of them, and a key one is that HOA and those conditions and covenants. So we'll start that process now. We'll start engaging. We'll start talking with both the existing owners, the existing tenants, and this Manhattan Area Housing Partnership and the community at large, just in terms of what kind of tweaks and adjustments we can make, both on the zoning side and on the HOA side. The agreement is very clear. We we need to meet that contingency or, you know, either party can can get out of the deal. So we'll start working on that right away. They'll hear this summer, but then I would anticipate they have a construction timeline they can talk about as well.
The the other thing we've got on the proposed motion and so on, and in some of the reading material, you've got Lot 34 to 52 and it's predicated on 19. So I just want to make sure we've got an error on the slide here.
It's my bad. Yep, it's 34.
All right, well.
I want to make just one comment. Now, what we're voting on here tonight is three things, right? The tax credit resolution, the PUD amendment and selling the lots, but we're not voting to approve the waiver of the utility hookup fees.
Not yet, no.
Okay, because I want to make clear I don't support that. I mean, I think this is a good deal for both the city and the developer for the price. But I've never been in favor of waiving, you know, the utility hookup fees because what ends up happening is that just is going to wind up going on everybody's water bill. And, you know, we keep raising the water rates. It's supposed to be an enterprise fund and, you know, people just aren't happy about that. And I think I pretty much haven't supported those over the past few years. I just don't don't care for that. And I just want to know, is that a deal breaker?
We anticipated bringing it as part of the development agreement. And that development agreement will address that public infrastructure. At that point in time, it would be an opportunity to discuss that. You know, from their perspective, obviously, it's 90 some thousand dollars and that money not being spent on the project obviously allows them to and they can speak on their behalf on how it hits them financially, but with it being a project that's benefiting that load of moderate income, I I don't know how it impacts them when.
Yeah, I just want to make clear that I'm I'm I just don't support that part of it. And I think that's just a little bit too much. And as as some of the other commissioners have mentioned, you know, we're we're still taking a little bit of a loss here, but I think it's a, you know, it's a win-win situation for for both parties, you know, the way I see it, because it it limits what we have. But but that piece I don't support. And I just want to be sure that we don't leave anyone with the impression that if we vote yes on these three items tonight, that that means by default, we have to support the the waiver of those utility hookup fees and building code.
And that development agreement's a contingency of the the land deal. So if it's not supported and they're not willing to renegotiate, then it will go away.
Good, well, let's call for public comment. And if anyone has a comment on this item, please come forward and state your name and address. And if you will, just sign in and then be attentive to our time limit, which is five minutes with a 30-second warning. So anyone's welcome to come forward.
I forgot to introduce the there is a representative from the Housing Partnership here. She does have a presentation for you.
This is Mariah Parker.
Good evening. My name is Mariah and I am the property manager for Manhattan Area Housing Partnership. Jill Jacoby would like to say that she was very disappointed she couldn't be here this evening, but sends me to do her bidding. So some of you might not know that Manhattan Area Housing Partnership is a nonprofit, Kansas-certified, community housing development organization, also known as a Chodo. We are dedicated to providing quality, safe and affordable housing to low-income individuals in the Manhattan community. We also are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization and in good standings with the state of Kansas. Currently, Manhattan Area Housing Partnership manages eight developments and a total of 201 units. 139 of those units are new construction. And 62 of those units have been rehabilitated. In 2016, we inherited Marysville Senior Housing in Marysville, Kansas, and became the owner and property manager of 24 senior living duplexes. So your typical senior housing duplex, the owners and management offer maintenance, lawn care, snow removal, and provide accessibility, which means there's no steps, and wider doors and hallways for individuals who might need a wheelchair or a walker. Currently, there are no recently built senior living duplexes at the 40% or 60% area median income in the Manhattan area. This is a picture of Marysville Senior Housing, which would be a great example for what could come. It's a street view of Keating Street. So on the left, you can see there's a couple duplexes from Marysville Senior Housing. This is the proposed floor plan for our proposed development Canyon Creek Senior Housing. Each unit would have two bedroom, one bathroom, living room, dining room, kitchen, and an attached garage. Currently, our partners are Schultz Construction located in Manhattan, Kansas. We have worked with Roger and Tim Schultz, and we're currently working with Brett Below. And we've done five completed developments with them already. We would also partner with Excel Development located in Lincoln, Nebraska. We've completed several, three developments with Excel previously. One in 2009, again in 2013, and once more in 2015. We also partner with Kansas Housing Resource Corporation or KHRC. We are very grateful that they have funded our previous developments that helped us bring more affordable housing to the Manhattan area. We also want to partner with the residents of Manhattan, the 55 and older range, for quality affordable housing in this area. Lastly, we want to thank the city of Manhattan and its commissioners for all the past and present support that they have shown for MAP. So with Canyon Creek Senior Housing, we are proposing that we we build 36 units or 18 duplexes and also have a clubhouse. We would be targeting the area median income individuals of the 40% and 60%. So that would mean that the max income for the max gross annual income for one individual would be as low as $20,240 a year and as much as $30,360 a year. The rent range for those units would be anywhere from $450 a month to $650 a month. There would be no market rate units. It would be 100% tax credit, which means that once a person qualifies for our housing, they would always qualify, whether or not their income exceeded that 30,000 limit. Lastly, all of our units would be accessible units, which means there's no stairs. There'd be wider hallways, wider doorways. So if an individual needed a walker or a wheelchair, they they could do so. Also, that would mean that we would have two or three units be adaptable units, meaning that if an individual was in a wheelchair, they could reach the cabinets, go up to the counter, and have lower shelves in the unit as well. So each unit would have two bedroom, one bathroom. They would all be Energy Star rated. There would be a clubhouse onsite, which would offer office space for a property manager and a lobby for the seniors to meet and participate in activities. Also, each unit would have an attached garage, walk-in showers, and all appliances would be included in the unit. The benefits to the area of Manhattan are housing stability and affordability. Individuals who had lived in Manhattan their whole lives would have more opportunity to stay in the Manhattan area. It would also offer additional quality affordable housing to seniors 55 and older. And lastly, it would show an an economic benefit, so an increase in employment opportunities, local spending, and affordable housing stock. We wanted to thank you for your time. Do you have any questions?
I just wanted to know about the energy you had in your previous slide. You had energy saving or what was that?
Energy Star rated. So currently at some of our other properties, we have Energy Star rated windows or energy-efficient appliances, like your washer and dryer. It's it would help make the, I believe, the cost of the utilities a little less.
I'm not familiar with how this works, but something you said kind of caught my ear here, and that was if one person qualifies at the below 30,000, which is the 60% rate, then all qualify regardless of minimum income?
Yes, so because there's no market rates, that person would always qualify. So if they got an increase and say, when we did their annual income check, if it was 35,000, they would still be able to stay in that unit.
So it's not that one person coming in qualifies all others. It's that if you gain an income that you remain in the housing.
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
And it doesn't Mac it 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 continues to go up as the person's income?
No, so once you qualify. Once you qualify at the 60%, so there's a income limit set out by the state. I didn't bring that sheet with me today. But it shows that the max gross annual income for one person would be that $30,360. If it was a household of two, there's a there's a different max income.
We didn't see in the paperwork that the Chodo Board had approved it. Has that been to your board?
Yes.
Thank you. You should ask it earlier, but thanks.
All right, thanks, Mariah. I appreciate it. Now, any public comment?
Good evening. I'm Dick Wordsburger. I'm the treasurer for Manhattan Area Housing Partnership. I've been on the board longer than I want to think, but at least 10 years. And we have done at least five tax credit financing. And this will be our first senior housing one. However, we took over the property management and eventually we'll have the ownership of the units in Marysville. And to give you an idea, there it's 100% occupied. We have a waiting list up there for those units. And we we currently with the projects that we have here, out of those 200 units, I think we have eight vacancies. So we have we have we see a need in the community. And I just want to, you know, I I think this is a we've had a great relationship with our developer. They know what we want. And I'm here to answer any questions really from a board perspective. Thank you.
I think we're good. Thanks, Dick.
Good evening. I'm Brett Ballou, president of Schultz Construction. Thank you for your guys' consideration tonight on our project. I wanted to speak on Jill's behalf because she couldn't be here tonight. I know she really did, but Jill cares a lot about her mission. I know she really did, but Jill cares a lot about her mission. She cares a lot about her properties and how they're maintained. Most of all, though, she cares about the people that are a part of those properties. That means a lot to me and to our business. We like to align ourselves with people that have the same values and believe in the same things that we do. So she wouldn't speak on her behalf, I'm sure, to that, but we can't make this project work without the subsidies that are being asked of you guys here tonight. So we fully appreciate what is being asked of it. It's not in any way that we think we can take advantage of a situation. I think, as you said, it's a win-win situation for both partners. But we simply cannot make the numbers work. I think Jason talked about it earlier, that you've had other developers take a look at it, what they're trying to do from construction costs, rent structures, what may be. They just can't make it work, and so we need this help from you guys. We need it from a sale of land, we need it from permits, hookup fees. I can totally respect the precedence that it might set. But I can also say that if you look at it from a partnership standpoint of what you're doing for the greater good of the community, that maybe there's circumstances in times where it's necessary to do such things. So thank you for your consideration on that. From the construction standpoint, Commissioner Reddy, you asked about the Energy Star. The Energy Star rating is a standard to which the building envelope is constructed. It's done at a higher level than what just the minimum code requires us to do. There's insulation factors, there's building envelope factors, there's HVAC things that we have to do. We have to pull in an outside third party to come and test it and make sure that it meets those requirements. And it's a prerequisite to get funded to be able to meet all those. So there's different milestones throughout construction that we have to do to meet those requirements. The last two projects that we did, Stonepoint Town Homes, or Stonepoint Apartments, and Willow Ridge Apartments, were all Energy Star certified. Just offering up any other questions you guys might have from the construction standpoint.
Good. Thanks very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment and ask if there are any additional commissioner comments or questions?
Yeah, I'll make some comments real quick. So first and foremost, I'm pretty excited about this. Obviously, I care a lot about affordable housing and projects that relate to that. And to your point, I actually hope this sets a precedent. I hope more developers come and ask us how the city can support them in making deals in developing affordable housing in Manhattan. So thank you for coming up with this proposal. To that point, one of the reasons why I was asking about the $190,000 and if we had to make that payment upfront is because I wish there was a way we could cut you a better deal. If there was a way that we could keep those specials on the rolls and just pay them, I'd prefer that. And the reason why I say that is because I think it's important for the commission to have the perspective that a few weeks ago, we had a similar conversation where we took on $600,000 worth of specials to take on a piece of land that will eventually be made into a park. That park is adjacent to some high-end, or I'm going to say high-end properties here here in the community. And in many ways, us taking on those specials, we're subsidizing part of that neighborhood. So if we're willing to take on $600,000 worth of bonds to do that in that neighborhood, we should be willing to take on some money to subsidize something as good as this, where there's a clear need for affordable housing for seniors in our community. So I'm fully supportive of this, including the waiving of the utility fees. And I encourage you to keep bringing back proposals like this. I want to keep seeing developments like this on the table because these are the things that our community needs. And again, thank you so much, and I'm excited about voting to support this tonight.
I've watched this process from the time that, you know, for a number of years, this property was on the delinquent property tax rolls. And I wanted it solved in the worst way. It's an unfortunate place to be for the city because we aren't collecting anything on it. It's costing us. And I want out of that situation. And I want the buyer to begin paying property taxes. I want it to be productive in the community. I'm not especially happy with the numbers and how we're doing it. But my greater goal is to be relieved of the ownership of this property and we aren't paying the property taxes. We aren't, are we? No. I want us to be free of that. And that is the higher priority for me. Otherwise, I might be objecting to the specials over time. But I'm willing to support it in order to keep this moving.
Like I said, I'll support the three things tonight. I still, you know, don't care for the waiver because that's a problem. You know, why don't we just waiver it for everybody? I mean, why do we have it if we can just waive it? Anybody that builds a house should come in and just say, hey, how about you waiver that? Because the building permit fee is not important, and neither is the water hookup, and that just doesn't make sense. The rest of it, I think, is great.
So I'm just going to make a couple of comments and make a motion. I did have a question, though. If this is a nonprofit, do we still collect property taxes on that? Okay, just wanted to be clear. No, I think this is something we need in our community. We have a huge need for senior citizen housing that's affordable. So I think this is one avenue. And we did put a request for proposals, and when nobody takes advantage of it, we need to look at alternatives and see how we can make this a good deal for everybody in the community. But this is just the initial phase of it. We still have to discuss the whole PUD and the other costs that are affiliated with this and construction, everything. So it's a long ways off. This is the first step in the right direction. With that said, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to approve and authorize... Do I, should I do all three? Okay, to move and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the real estate agreement with Manhattan Area Housing Partnership. Number two, approve resolution number 012919-A, supporting the Manhattan Area Housing Partnership application for affordable senior housing tax credits for lots thirty-four through fifty-two in Lee Mill Village. And three, authorize the city manager to sign the Lee Mill Village PUD amendment application.
Second.
Go, roll, please.
Commissioner Reddy?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner McKee?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Mayor Dodson?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
So we'll move to item B, Conference Center Expansion. And our presenter again is Jason Hilliers.
Thank you, Mayor, commissioners. Just to run through real quickly, we have second reading of our charter ordinance on the agenda this evening, raising our transient guest tax rate to seven and a half percent. Our recent history is on the screen, just kind of walks you through the community going from two percent back in eighty-nine to a more recent increase in 2017, from six percent to seven percent. That half percent increase is being proposed primarily to generate revenue to support a conference center expansion. The increase is there to assist with that debt retirement. We're talking about a fourteen thousand, fifteen thousand square foot addition to the west side of the existing facility at the Manhattan Conference Center down at, between Third and Fourth Street at Fort Riley Boulevard. It has a three and a half million dollar budget. And if you recall, that's about a million dollar increase from where we were when we first started negotiating and working through a financing plan. That 3.5 million, we'll have a twenty-year bond annual payment, anywhere from $265,000 to $300,000. And we've identified four different areas, all really, two, three, and four are all associated with the transient guest tax fund. And then HCW's increase on an annual basis of $20,000. So of the three and a half million for the improvement, HCW is set to pay us, or pay back the city, $800,000. So they'll start making those additional $20,000 payments in 2029. And that's above the existing $100,000 that we've received since 2012. We have talked about the outstanding star bond and that $90,000 that goes towards that debt retirement ending in 2026. There's also the potential of the half cent actually generating more than $130,000. That's a fairly conservative estimate. In fact, I think it may have actually, a half percent may actually have generated in 2018 more than $130,000. So we're going to stay conservative with our estimates. But I do believe over time, that could actually generate more. We agreed to budget fifty grand in the transient guest tax fund to transfer to bond and interest. And that'll be in addition to the additional $130,000 that we've talked about with the half percent increase. If those revenues would fall short on that $50,000, the CVB and HCW have agreed to split that up to that fifty grand. HCW did respond, since our last meeting, to add a statement that if they participate in that shortfall, they'd like to have the balloon payment offset by that same amount. So they'll assist us with the debt payments along the course of time for our debt. Their balloon payment is just over $2 million in 2046. And they've requested we reduce that by the amount that they actually had to participate in that debt service. So that is part of the agreement this evening. By increasing by the half percent and annually budgeting fifty grand out of the transient guest tax fund for the expansion, we could establish a balance to offset those annual debt payments from 2023 to 2029. So if we do both of those things right away, if we start with the 2020 budget, anticipating the $130,000, and go ahead and set aside fifty grand, we can build up a reserve that will cover any shortfall that won't be realized until the 2026 timeframe is here and the additional $20,000 in 2029 from HCW is realized. It's a way to build up an amount of money that'll help offset those debt payments when they're realized. Just a reminder, off the west side of the conference center, they plan to bring the facility out to the sidewalk and create a pedestrian corridor. Right now, it's green space with a sidewalk. As you enter in off Fourth Street into the garage, that building obviously doesn't come out that far. Here's another view of it lit. Both these images have quite a pedestrian space, and the revised image in the plans that they've provided us don't necessarily come out that far. Opened the wrong one. The image that they provided us that night we were talking about actually leaves a sidewalk and a path here, but it's not as wide as those concepts and those images provide you. There's not seating and tables and chairs underneath here, but that fourteen thousand square feet becomes the addition. This is that pre-convene area, the walkway and the hallways that exist today. And then this just depicts that addition going out to really close to the curb line. So there is some space there, and it'll be a matter of finishing that out to look a lot like it does a little bit on Third Street as we enter in to the main area. Any questions on that concept and how it's coming out? We've had multiple discussions about that, but just wanted to remind you of how they plan to lay that out.
In the materials, it said that the original conference center cost $9 million.
That's correct.
And so also in the materials, it says that this has gone from $2 million to $3 million.
From two and a half to three and a half for an estimate. So the agreement you had this evening has 3.5 million.
Three point five. How, and when was the 2.5 estimate?
That was an estimate that HCW gave us towards the, oh, kind of the fall of 2018.
Because it hadn't been that long.
Yeah.
What kind of scrutiny did you exercise with regard to that increase? What is, I mean, that $1 million in six months' time, estimate-wise, is significant. And I know there have been tariffs and all kinds of other things, but how closely were you able to scrutinize this?
The design team that Rick Huffman hires, actually David Hess is his architect, even last summer, was cautious about the budget. When, if you recall, Tony Peterman came in 2017, and JLL did a report and kind of estimated what a project like this would cost, and he estimated three and a half to four million. I think Rick developed a team, they looked at it, they felt like they could do it for two and a half. I think once the architect and the engineers finally went to a percent of completion that's higher, they got to a point where they realized all their costs, and that's when the feedback came, we're at three and a half instead of two and a half. There really wasn't anything in particular that they pointed to, but their design and engineers basically told them, you're going to spend three and a half million dollars on this addition. So he was willing to increase that. We looked at the participation from HCW at $800,000 and looked at the, I mean, fourteen thousand, fifteen thousand square feet. That three and a half million dollars, again, that's what the consultant told us it would cost. So I think he was trying to cut some costs out of this thing and felt like he could value engineer and bid this thing out privately and get it to a two and a half million dollar figure. But it clearly increased three and a half. The design...
It looks like it's a third bigger than the original structure, roughly. And I just wanted to...
Which would suggest it'd be closer to three million.
Because one wall is already existing, even though it's glass, for the most part. I just wondered why it had gone up so much.
Yeah.
Okay.
The explanation wasn't in great detail. Through our end of the process, though, you know, we make the loan, and then they supply the payments. So actual construction costs will be no greater than three and a half million dollars. And we'll monitor those as they come in before those payments are made.
And we won't have it constantly creeping up because we have this agreement?
If it goes beyond three and a half million, we'll be back in front of you talking about that. But at this point in time, three and a half million's the budget. I think, just to give you a little bit of... The developer doesn't want it to go over three and a half million dollars either.
Okay.
And their concern to us was any type of creep that would increase that cost. They really want to cap it at three and a half.
Thank you.
Yep.
We pick up about, out of that fourteen thousand, we pick up something like nine thousand of useful space, right?
It's usually about half, so it's right around seven to 7,500 square feet. Our conference center is 30,000 square feet, and I believe Brad can correct me if I'm wrong, but it's around 15,000 square feet of rentable usable space for conferences. And this will take us to roughly 45,000 in total square footage with about 22,000, 23,000 of rentable space.
Just to add a little information here, perhaps, if you bid a fixed-price job and you get it wrong, you're in big trouble. So the way this proceeds is if you can get to a reasonable state of design, then your price is much more predictable. And if we have a fixed-price contract with, let's say, 12% contingency, so you build it, your construction cost is 325, or 3.25... it, your construction cost is 325, or 3.25, so you've got .25 in contingency, that's usually enough to get the thing done without going over. And a lot of times, the way the contract's written, the constructor is the one who's liable if it goes over unless there's some other kind of event like weather or something.
It had just gone up a million in six months, so I was trying to look out for the future.
They got the estimate wrong.
Yeah. So just to walk you through where we've been and where we're headed, our original loan with HCW was for 5 million, and that's back to the nine and a half million dollar concept. We've received payments for them for the last seven years in a total of 100,000 a year. So 700,000 is what we've received to date. That brings the balance to 4.3 million. We're talking about adding another 800,000 of the 3.5 million back to the loan amount, and which will be repaid. So that beginning loan balance goes to 5.1 million. The $100,000 forgiveness is the negotiation we had with HCW about the increase in property taxes that they'll realize on the property. They, they advocated that they clearly pay taxes today, the addition will generate more taxes, they were looking for some relief. We explored IRBs to try to provide an opportunity. It's in a TIF, and IRBs are not allowed in tax increment finance zones. So we structured a relief effort through this agreement to where their payments will go from $100,000 a year to $90,000 a year for the next 10, and then they'll go to 120 after that. So the real beginning balance is back to the $5 million number, and then we start highlighting how their payments increased from 90,000 a year from 2019 to 2028, and then from 2029 to 2045, they go to $120,000 a year. And then there's the balloon payment in 2046 that we talked about, the 2,600,000. And in the event they have been called to pay any shortfall along the way of that debt service, that's the amount we'll reduce the balloon payment from. Clear as mud. Our action this evening is second reading of the charter ordinance, increasing that transient guest tax rate to 7.5%. And the amendment that is in the packet with HCW and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute. I'd be happy to stand for any questions. I did notice Brad Everett with Hilton Garden Inn and manager of the Manhattan Conference Center is also here this evening, if you have any questions. Lyle and Karen are here as well, and I would just reiterate where Lyle's statements were at our last meeting. We've seen a lot of different projects in the, in the state and in the region that involve conference centers, and most communities are paying for those conference centers in their entirety. We know Junction City had a similar type of situation when John Q. Hammonds was in business. He didn't, he didn't pay for any conference centers across the country. Those communities paid for them, and he ran them. We felt fortunate when we found a partner who was willing to participate financially. And in our experience with looking at other communities, we're typically in an enviable eye from a lot of communities when we tell them what we've done. I know Hutch is in the mix right now of trying to redo what they have, and their city manager has been in touch with Ron and myself, just asking how, you know, we got this deal done because they would love to have similar terms. So they're working on that today. But for the most part, having participation in a conference center and having it on the tax rolls is somewhat of an anomaly in Kansas. Happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Yeah, so this, this has been in the works for a while, so there weren't too many surprises. I think one of the better, there are several good aspects to it. As a growing community, this shows evidence that we need to have more spaces for conferences and events as opposed to downsizing everything, investing back into the community. They're thinking about increasing the transient guest tax, and I asked in the past if the other hoteliers were also on board with it, and I remember Karen saying that the CVB completely supports it, as does the Chamber, unanimous decision on both, both steering committee and their boards. So that gives me a little bit of comfort because it's not initiated by the city. Anytime you have an organization, for example, the mall, when they did the community, is it the community interest development improvement?
Community Improvement District.
And then the TDDs and all of these, where they're kind of looking and reflecting and seeing what they need to do to make it a better community and how they can grow and invest, this is something that was part of that proposal. And I don't see a big deterrent to the city where we are putting in, being put in a bind where we have to pay off everything at the end. It seems like if they lengthen that process, is it to 2046, eventually, whether it's HCW and CVB, it'll come out of some of those other funding sources. So this, should we move forward with it? I think everything else will be fluid as far as the designs are concerned, but I think the investment in the community speaks a lot for Manhattan, as well as both of the boards that want to invest back in it. So I don't see any negative aspects to it right now, but I want to make sure that in the future, the commissioners that are gonna come, becoming on are also privy to all of this information, kind of like when we did our goal setting, how it was all laid out, when things were going to end and who was gonna pay what. That needs to be set forth so there isn't any kind of misunderstandings along the way. And of course, that's what the contracts will do as well. So I don't have a question per se, but I think, you know, this is, this is a lot of money, as is, as is everything else, but this is one thing that may not be as burdensome to our city residents, I think.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it. My, my only concern was I didn't want to see, you know, property tax go to it, general fund money, and this takes care of it. You know, in my mind, you know, what we're basically saying is, number one priority of where transient guest tax goes is to this conference center. And then once that is paid, then whatever else is left can be given for uses to the CVB, whatever, but you know, your slide still leaves me with that, you know, strange impression. You know, it says the, the CVB agrees to it. It's not their money. I mean, I know a lot of people in the city, you know, think that, that, you know, it comes in, it has to be given to them. No. And so by approving this, you're basically saying, I don't even know why the conference center would have to pay a balloon payment, you know, to take that money off of there because in my mind, you know, first thing that comes off the top of transient guest tax is this bill up until it's paid for. So that's my view on it, but I'm 100% in support of it.
Yeah, that, that balloon payment's something we will receive from the developer, so, yeah.
Despite my comments with my concern about how fasted the price had gone up, I am supporting and supportive of this proposal. I have been an advocate for increasing the size of our conference center so that we can handle slightly larger conferences, and I think that's important, and I think it's really important that we be able to even handle two moderate-sized conferences at the same time so that we aren't maxing out so quickly. There are conferences we can't handle, and I know we aren't gonna do the big ones with thousands, but we need bigger than 400, 500, maybe up to seven, eight, and we'll be moving. And it's important. At the Chamber retreat, there was discussion about, the successes we see today are based on what happened seven, eight years ago, maybe 10. And if we're going to compete in seven or eight years from now, we have to be investing in those changes. I do appreciate this partnership, and I always want to partner as much as we can so that we aren't funding it totally. So for those reasons, I'd be, I will be supporting.
Anecdotally, we, we have attempted to schedule a conference in the fall of 2020 in this community, and it's been very difficult to find space, not just at the conference center, but other facilities in the community. So they're, they're out there already looking for multiple times throughout the next two years, and the experts behind me probably like it's well beyond two years. It's, it's great to have that kind of interest.
So do they have bookings for it yet? No, it won't be long till they're taking reservations, right?
Brad's quite that aggressive yet, but yeah.
Let's call for public comment. If there's any comment on this issue, please come forward. Just a couple of comments here from me. Between now and 2046, I'm sure HCW and others will be called upon to make modernization changes. So there'll be other opportunities for the, the city and HCW to be in partnership to continue to improve our facilities. And right now, as Jason pointed out, this is a rather unique partnership that either party by themselves would not be able to accomplish. So hopefully, we can be successful in attracting these mid-sized conventions with adequate breakout space and really make a, an improvement to our city. The only thing that I think we have to keep in mind here is that a lot of people worry about the transient guest tax in combination with sales tax reaching a level that is a bit of a threshold. So we've got to be attentive to that as we go forward as well. We're, we're about at that 15, 16% level that some of the experts have, have talked about. I think the, the counter that might be, when you're in your own market, and that is you don't have any competitors near you, that's somewhat alleviated, but I think we still have to be mindful. So with that, entertain a motion.
I move we approve the charter ordinance number 60, increasing the transient guest tax rate to 7.5% and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute an addendum to economic development agreement with HCW to construct the expansion of Manhattan Conference Center.
I second the motion.
Your in-call, roll.
Commissioner Butler.
Yes.
Commissioner McKee.
Yes.
Commissioner Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Dodson.
Yes.
Commissioner Reddy.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
All right, there being no further business, the meeting is adjourned.